I would like to welcome everyone to this evening's meeting of the Colonial School District Board of Directors. This is the May twentieth business meeting. If everyone will please rise to pledge allegiance, I'd appreciate it. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that the board met in executive session on May third to discuss administrative vacancies and the administrative assistance agreement expiring June tenth. The meeting lasted about forty-five minutes. The board also met this evening to review the personnel report, assessment appeals, school safety and security, and an update on CEA negotiations. That meeting lasted one hour. Dr. Christian, we're going to turn it over to you for student recognition, please.
We are. We're going to go before we do our student recognitions, we are going to first go out of order and I'm going to ask our student representatives, usually item eleven, that will take place before our student recognition. So I believe our student reps are prepared to present tonight. Gentlemen.
Sorry to start off with Ridge Park. To honor Autism Acceptance Month through the week of April twelfth, students engage in a variety of activities focused on acceptance and differences, including themed dress-up days, morning meeting activities, and a virtual autism acceptance evening event hosted by Ronnie Berman, Tracy Quinn, Sarah Tannen, and Erin Pitts. Many thanks to the RPPTO for the support and for these activities. Ridge Park's amazing PTO welcomed back in-person learners on April nineteenth with a huge balloon arc, red carpets, and signs of encouragement. On April twenty-eighth, all RP students enjoyed Dumpster Dog through a virtual assembly. Students learned about the importance of being pollution preventers and recycling. Kindergartner orientation was held virtually on Wednesday, May seventh. Kindergarten teachers did an excellent job sharing what to expect in kindergarten to families. Tonight was a huge success.
All right, moving on to Ridge Park Elementary, five-day instruction began April twelfth. There were three hundred and eighty-two students attending in person five days a week. On April thirteenth, dinner night, virtual for third-grade students. The third-grade students were invited to participate in a night in which there were star chefs at home. Each third-grade classroom gathered in their Zoom to watch how-to pizza-making videos featuring every third-grade teacher as a guest. The third-grade students learned how to chow dough, pour on the sauce, and spread the cheese. Families dressed up for the event and created their own pizza shop at home. On April thirtieth, Arbor Day, Jean Kelly and Maria Wellzack planted a tree in honor of Arbor Day. One tree was planted via livestream so everyone could be a part of the event. On May nineteenth, Spring Jam Assembly was held. Third-grade recognition day will be on June fourth. Fun Fitness Day will be on June ninth.
Now we're going to go to Plymouth Elementary. During the week of May third to seventh, Plymouth Elementary celebrated their teachers and staff in many ways. The PTO decorated the entrance of the school for Monday and also treated staff to a one-for-lunch on Thursday. Staff was also provided lunch and other treats by Mrs. Philip and Ms. Udovich throughout the week. Third-grade students, both in-person and virtual, were invited to an outdoor pizza picnic lunch on Friday, May fourteenth, to celebrate their hard work and perseverance while taking the PSSA. Now we're going to go to Conshohocken Elementary. Through the month of April and continuing into May third, grade students collected bag donations of generally-used children's clothing and items to donate to Cradles to Crayon. Thanks to Ms. Campbell and Ms. Donovan for continuing this tradition of giving in a safe way for our students. Kindergartners zoomed with former CSD parents, Ms. Dina Fink, on the life cycle of the butterfly on Friday, May sixteenth. Ms. Fink shared with students to monarch butterflies she raises and shows them being released into nature. Students were amazed. Our kindergartner students then released their own butterflies with a special outside ceremony for all, roomies and zoomies, on April twenty-eighth. For Earth Day, CE had the opportunity to collaborate once more with the EAC Conshohocken Environmental Advisory Council in offering the students and their families environmental education opportunities. On April twenty-second, Brandon McCracken, a park ranger in Monco Mary County, an environmental educator and an EAC volunteer, connected with all the CE kids on Zoom to talk about spotted lanternfly and explain why this is considered an invasive species and represent a problem in our community. Students have the opportunity to work on some activity pages, build their own lanternfly headbands, and also plenty of smart questions. Scholastic online buy-one-get-one-free week was held from April twelfth to seventeenth. Thank you to Ms. Prado Whiskey for coordinating in this event with the PTO, Foundation Training on April twenty-sixth.
Moving on to Colonial Middle School. During these past few weeks, the CMS Student Council has been busy. On April thirtieth, they celebrated Colonial Derby Day as students and staff dressed up and wore their big hats and bow ties to celebrate the Kentucky Derby. It was a fun-filled day with trivia questions related to the Kentucky Derby and raffle surprises for all those who played along with the trivia games. Whether you were in person or at home, you could participate in some of the fun as some of the prizes were mailed home to virtual-only students. During the first week of May, they celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week with a variety of festive activities. The students on the Student Council prepared a lip-dub thanking for the teachers and students throughout the building and shared the video with the staff via Flipgrid to show their appreciation. They pulled students to identify award recipients for the 2021 Staff Awards. Winners were presented with a certificate highlighting the superlatives that the students voted them for. They planned a Spirit Week based on feedback from the staff of their favorite spirit days. They did Pejama Day on Monday, Workout Day on Tuesday, Vacation Day on Wednesday, Zoom Spirit Day on Thursday, and College Day on Friday. They joined forces with the PTO to hold raffles for the teachers. Each teacher received a raffle ticket and participated in games like Daily Trivia and the Morning Announcement Bingo throughout the week to earn more raffle tickets. Thanks to the generosity of the parents and local businesses, they prepared over forty gift baskets as raffle prizes. On Friday, the students got to deliver them and make the teacher's day. As I finish up with Plymouth White Marsh High School, seniors are excited for the prom tomorrow that will be held at Elmwood Zoo. This week was filled with Keystone exams, and the last two exams will be held on Monday and Tuesday of the upcoming week. Senior finals will also be held on the upcoming week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Good luck to all my fellow seniors. And lastly, seniors that are going on the senior trip have been informed this week regarding the process of going down to Disney. All seniors will have access to recording of the video. As I finish up, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity. It was more than I could ever hope for being here. Although this is out of order, normally there would be a lot more. I want to thank everyone listening to us each and every month for the report of each, like, each school and just allowing us this opportunity. Very grateful. Thank you.
As Joe said, we were excited at the beginning of the year to represent our students but also our community. And so, you know, we are very thankful for this opportunity to, you know, have a voice and show that, you know, the students' voice do matter in our, you know, school district. So, thank you for that.
Joe and Drew, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you for your professionalism, how prepared you were each month and detailed in sharing all the wonderful events that take place in our schools. We certainly appreciate your service to the board. If you look over my shoulder, there's two bags there, one for each of you. So our student board reps, and we'll get them down to the high school tomorrow, our student board reps get a plaque commemorating their service to the district. And we added a little something this year. If you remember, I asked you where you were going to school, so you'll have a little a little spirit wear to show off on Temple and Virginia Tech's campuses. So, and those Virginia Tech colors cannot be mistaken, by the way. Temples are great too, but there's some bright colors down in Hokie Land. So, we'll get those to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Dr. Christian.
Yeah, both of you have been wonderful. Your attendance has been great. Your professionalism has been great. We can't thank you enough for sitting through some really long meetings this month, this year. So, thanks very much for all you've done.
They both have very good voices for radio and podcasts as well. So, keep that in mind. I don't know what your future holds, but you definitely have have some good voices. It was always nice to hear your report.
Thank you again. We really do appreciate it.
Thanks, guys. All the best in your next, the next chapter. We'll see you at graduation. Next on our student recognitions, we're going to recognize, we're going to start, hopefully start a new tradition that'll last quite some time in Colonial. So, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bakani, but we asked some of our seniors to name a teacher that they felt had a great impact on them in their K-12 career. And so, we have seniors from, who hold different positions in our school and were selected by administration to come tonight and talk about that. And then our teachers are going to talk about the students a little bit. So, hoping this becomes a longstanding tradition. We would love to have everybody, but obviously, time is limited. But I will turn it over to Dr. Bakani. Jason?
Thank you, Dr. Christian. Thanks for having me. To the school board, I'd like to recognize, we have four students this year, and we're looking forward to starting the tradition as Dr. Christian mentioned. Four outstanding students to recognize. Thanks for being here this evening, how busy you are, as well as four faculty members. Our first student is Mr. Bobby McGuire. He's the senior class president. And this year, Bobby has worked a tremendous amount with our class sponsors, really trying to find creative ways to keep the school's spirit alive, not only with our senior class, as well as our, all of our student body, nine to twelve. So I'm going to turn it over to Bobby, who has a few words to say, as well as a teacher to recognize. Bobby?
Hey, my name is Bobby. If you guys don't know me already, you know, as you guys know, this has been a very challenging year and especially being a leader and a face for our class and everything like that. It was my goal to make sure, you know, I had everyone smile and everyone laugh at our events. And that was what made this year amazing, when we had homecoming and everything like that, just seeing the laughs and smiles. It really like, my heart just, it was amazing. But yeah, you know, high school, I made a lot of connections with teachers, you know, but there's just one teacher in mind, Mr. Carr. He was an unbelievable teacher as an AP European teacher. My mother said it best. He's like a godfather-like figure. You know, he has open arms for me every single day. And I believe he's one of the major reasons why I got my Navy RTC scholarship. And Mr. Carr is like family to me, and I know my mom and my father, you know, they view him as family also. So, Mr. Carr, thank you for everything you've done.
Wow, Bobby, the godfather, huh? I like that. How about that? Well, I just wanted to say hi to everybody. Hi, Dr. Christian. Hello, board. Hello, administration. Maybe your mom and dad are watching, but definitely a special hello to you, my Irish friend, student, right? You may laugh, but during the first week of class in his junior year in our AP European History class, Bobby asked from where my ancestors originated. Oh, there you are. I see you. I told him the Republic of Ireland and Scotland. He said, "Me too." Then I looked up at him again, and I said, "Really?" He said, "Absolutely. Mine are from there too." He went on to prove to me that he was more Irish than I was because he had been there to visit his adoptive relatives, and I had not. He smiled, stuck out his hand, and gave me the best handshake I have ever been given. I went to the hospital later on to get my hand checked out. I don't know if you've ever gotten that handshake from Bobby McGuire, but it's not one you'd soon forget. Bobby had many choices of where to attend high school, elite private prep schools where tuition will be taken care of. But when asked why he didn't want to go to them, he said that they didn't have a best buddies program that matches students with intellectual disabilities with students in the mainstream. He has helped to lead this organization for several years. Bobby's accomplishments are long and remarkable, but what impresses me the most are his connections with his family, his religion, those who he helps, and of course, his school and his country. Thank you, Bobby, for your future service in the United States Navy. Bobby is leaving PW in a better place, and his unbreakable spirit will never be forgotten. Thanks for not forgetting about your old teacher, Bobby. Love you, buddy.
Love you too, Mr. Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Much appreciated. Congratulations, Bobby. Thanks for all of your work, as well as your leadership as a senior, tire student bodies, as well as our seniors. Looking forward to next week, as well as tomorrow for the prom.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Dr. Bakani, are the next, he's not going to make some of us board members teary. Mr. Carr, that wasn't nice. And, you know, hopefully we'll not have any more of those tear-jerking conversations.
Never for me. So, I mean, Mrs. Moore.
Thank you. Our next student to recognize, one of our avid students, highly involved with extracurricular activities, as well as our track team. What a star student she is. Speak to any of our staff members, as well as Mrs. Ben, our counselor, works with our avid program. Big, bright smile, as well as an engaging personality and always willing to help. You see her smile right there, Amira Harris. Amira?
Hi, everybody. I'm Amira Harris. Like Bobby said, there's a lot of teachers who have impacted me over the years, but Alicia Taylor had to be the most impactful one. Jason Taylor was more than just a teacher. He not only cared for his students inside the classroom, but also outside as well. He began as a stranger, yet became one of the most influential people in my life. In him, I found a mentor, someone who became like family. His impact on my life was inspiring, and he always wanted me to strive for my best. He taught me the true meaning behind kindness. He taught me to always allow window for new friendships by just being overly nice to everyone. He was leading me into my future by helping me realize I can do anything. There were many lessons that he taught me. He taught me to be the difference in someone's life. You never know what a person is going through. That is why it's so important to spread as much love as possible. He also taught me to believe in myself, to never doubt my abilities when it comes to anything. And even though he's no longer with us, I continue to abide by these lessons every day.
Amira, that was awesome. I mean, talk about the clears. My goodness. That was one heck of a tribute. Thank you for sharing that with us.
We have Alicia Taylor, Alicia Taylor's here to represent Jason. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Oh, thank you. You said no tears. I was like, uh-oh. First of all, thank you so much, Amira, and everyone that invited me to this call. I'm so honored to be able to speak on behalf of my husband, Mr. Jason Taylor. So, Amira is an exceptional student in the classroom and highly involved in extracurricular activities. She's a former member of the spring track and field as a sprinter. She qualified for the Penn Relais, the two-hundred meter, and the Relais each year. She's a member of the junior varsity basketball team for the last three years and started at the guard position each season. She's been a member of the Black Culture Awareness Club for all four years and helped organize the school's first Unity Walk and Fashion Show. I'm sure you have a beautiful rest tomorrow, by the way, because she's been sending me pictures. Amira is heavily involved with the community service and volunteers that sparked the wave, homeless shelters, and beautiful flying the community. During her free time, she works as a server at the Mosaic Village and babysits her neighbors and family. She's described by her staff members as wonderful, positive, caring, kind-hearted, and always with a bright smile. She'll be tending Clark Atlanta University in the fall. And so, this is where I tell you how I know Amira. So, Amira, at age fourteen, came to my house at the end of twenty-seventeen to come visit Jason at the end of his life. She's someone you instantly love. She, maybe it's her big, beautiful smile or kind heart, but I instantly loved her. I was so incredibly touched that she came to say goodbye. Here's this young, fourteen-year-old girl, and Aunt drove her. It's just a crazy time at my house, and she sat with them. And I just always remember, and I just admired her strength and her courage. It was such a heartbreaking visit. Just truly admired her. Since Jason's passing, we formed a special relationship. For some reason, she keeps texting me and checking in on me and visiting me and loves my family. We love her. Just incredibly proud of all the hard work and everything that Jason has taught you. And just it keeps going on, and I just love the fact that the things you wrote about him, that he's with you every day. And I know he's up there with your mom, and they're both smiling down at you. So incredibly proud. And I'm proud of you, and I can't thank you enough for asking me to come tonight to speak on his behalf for you. So, I congratulate you, and all the Taylors love you.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Alicia. Dr. Bakani?
Thank you, Amira. Thank you, Alicia, for being here this evening. The next student we're going to recognize is one of our tech stars, tech school student stars. Here he is in the corner there. I know, speaking to Dion last week, working really hard in the classroom as well at the tech school, Mr. Dion Scutching. Dion, welcome. Thanks for being here this evening. Congratulations.
Well, there's a lot of teachers at PW that I like, I really like, but since I attended Central Monco Technical High School, I met this one guy, and his name is Mr. Renzi. And he helped me learn my certifications through CPR and my ladder certifications. He really taught me, like, never give up, even though I can be a pain in the class. And he always told me to focus on the bigger picture. And his quality and compassion to all that he does, that's why I appreciate him so much. And no, well, as for me, I'm not really like a guy who'd talk a lot, but no words could explain, like, the gratitude I have for him.
Mr. Renzi, are you able to unmute?
I am. Thank you, Dr. Christian, Dr. Bakani, administrators. Dion, thank you. This is a very humbling thing for me. I'm a new teacher. This is only my third year at tech, and being that it's my only third year teaching, Dion is my first class through. So, I took over for the previous instructor, so I had a couple of his students up until last year. So Dion's class is my first true group of students that I'm seeing through. And it is a humbling to hear the feedback from a student, because that's why we do it. If you don't know, there's three types of grading at tech. There's knowledge, which is your, you know, your normal skills, or your normal, you know, tests and quizzes. And then you have your skills, which are your hands-on things, which is really embodies what the technical school is about. But there's a third grading criteria, and it's work ethic. And I think that's probably the most important of the three types of grading at tech is work ethic. And man, work ethic has to do with your, like, dependability, your being in uniform, being engaged in class every day, your overall citizenship. And really, Dion, for his three years with me, embodied that work ethic. He was, I couldn't tell you, if I had a more dependable student, if I needed extra help after class. We do a lot of community relations and after-hours things at the tech school, and they would weigh on the public safety department for some extra security and whatnot. And Dion was always the first to volunteer as a community today, after hours. This is on his own time. He would be the first one to sign up without hesitation. He was, he's always dependable. His attendance, my lord, if, I could probably count on one hand and have fingers left over for how many days Dion missed in three years. When I'm, and that goes to his work ethic, and we're preparing kids for the, you know, the industry. And what a wonderful quality is if, and as an employer, looking at someone, knowing that they're going to be there every day. You can't ask for anything more than that. He's a very calm and quiet kind of guy. He said he doesn't like to talk a lot. I would beg to differ. But he has a quiet leadership about him. Other kids look to him. He is, I think he was the president of his class, of his session, and elected by his peers. And he just kept a calm presence among everyone. And it was, that's something that can't be taught necessarily. It evolves, it can grow, but I think it's a tribute to his family. He has a great family, and I forgot to speak to his mom on several occasions. And he always, he may not have always had buy-in with some of the things I was going to do. But, you know, he just kind of, you know, took it and faced it and accomplished it, and he came through in the end. And that perseverance part of his personality is another amazing attribute to Dion. So, having, I would take a hundred of him every year if I could, and it's, this was just a nice experience, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to be able to teach him for three years. So, thank you, and thanks, everybody, for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Renzi. Thank you, Dion. Did a great job. I know how nervous you are. See that? Nice job. Congratulations. Our final student that's being recognized this evening is our Student Council President. This student I've known since Ridge Park, unbelievably, then when she was a kindergartner, so can't believe she's a senior. Congratulations to Lisa Smolik. Lisa's done a tremendous job as one of our top leaders in our building. Appreciate all of her work and her input this year, especially during the pandemic. And I'm going to introduce Lisa and the teacher that she's going to recognize. Lisa?
Thank you, Dr. Bakani. Well, first off, I want to second everything that Bobby said about Mr. Carr. Mr. Carr is my bonus block teacher, and it felt like I had a friend on the third floor. So, but yeah, I mean, everything that all of you guys have said has been sure it's a very hard to choose just one teacher to recognize and thank as part of PW, because, you know, PW truly is a very special place. So, you know, I'd like to recognize and thank Mr. Rafferty. Mr. Rafferty was one of my first teachers at PW. I took freshman year English with him, and then I had him for publications sophomore year. But even though I only had him for those two short classes, I actually participated in yearbook club and mini-thon for all four years. So, I guess you say, I guess you could say he couldn't get rid of me. But yeah, Mr. Rafferty was a sponsor of both clubs and actually encouraged me to join when I was hesitant. So, you know, everyone always talks about the importance of having a support system, especially at school. I want to thank Mr. Rafferty for always extending a welcoming and supportive hand in any situation. It's always important to have a mentor that, you know, will always have your back, especially in an environment that changes you and changes around you as quickly as high school does. So, yeah, again, I just, I'm very thankful for all the teachers I had at my time at PW, especially Mr. Rafferty. And honestly, I don't think I have enough words or time to express all of that, but yeah, that's definitely my one expression of gratitude.
Thanks so much, Lisa. It really means so much hearing you say that, and I truly am honored having you, you know, with me as the teacher to talk tonight. You know, honestly, every teacher that I'm sure you've encountered, you know, all five teachers every semester, every year, probably feels the same way that I do, you know, about just how much of a joy you made teaching and how you really made our day-to-day just great. You know, really, really validated our decision to become teachers, having you in our classroom. Getting prepared to kind of talk tonight, I was actually able to look through some of your old work. I saved a lot of your old assignments as, like, examples, I guess, for future generations. So, what I, one thing I did find, so four years ago, I don't know if you remember, I asked my ninth-grade students to write a page that might appear in a future memoir. So, for this assignment, Lisa went into great detail explaining how she planned to become a doctor to help those in need, more specifically in countries that lacked trained medical staff. On this page, Lisa chronicles her experiences there, demonstrating her passion for helping others while anticipating a deep respect for the cultures that she would encounter. So, this assignment was dated September seventeenth, twenty-seventeen, and it captures Lisa to a T. "One month into meeting her, I knew that I met someone special, a student with extraordinary focus and a commitment to helping others." She's the kind of student that, when you're teaching, just bails you out of many jams. "Realizing this, I immediately put on my recruiting hat. When parent-teacher conferences came around, I basically turned into John Calipari or Coach K and made the hard sell to Mrs. Smolak for Lisa to join the yearbook." When parent teacher conferences came around, I basically turned into John Calipari or Coach K and made the hard sell to Mrs. Smalley act for Lisa to join the yearbook. Luckily for me, she was already interested and she quickly became an editor and she bailed me out of many jams. Shortly after, Lisa sought me out to become one of the heads for our minithon planning committee. As a student head, she bailed me out of many jams, if you aren't noticing a trend. Honestly, I could share dozens of anecdotes featuring Lisa as the sort of student that embodies PW and colonial spirit. But I'm going to leave it this. So many teachers hope to help students along the way. It's what drives us. It's why we became teachers. Lisa is the one that helped me out and she's the one that really helped make Plymouth White Marsh a better place. So Lisa, with this in mind, good luck next year and Hoya Saxon. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of our, our students and teachers for presenting tonight. It's, it's really a great example of what a great senior class this is, as evidenced by their accomplishments, which we'll be talking about over the next several weeks as we prepare for graduation. Dr. Bacani, I believe we have one more student recognition and it's certainly an impressive one at that. And I believe Mr. Engel is here to help.
Mr. Engel, want to introduce our special honoree today?
Uh-oh, Mr. Engel, we cannot hear you.
Is that better?
That's great.
Okay, great. Headphones weren't working, I guess. Katie Smith is with us today. Katie has been a member of the Colonial Players for all four years through high school. She's participated in all eight shows that we did, including both virtual shows that we put on this year. She has portrayed some really strong characters onstage. Mira in Theory of Relativity, she was Paulette, the, the hair salon worker in Legally Blonde. And unfortunately, last year, you would have all loved her as Elton John in Amelie, but we didn't get to put that one on. But she was really fantastic in that. Katie has an incredible dedication to her craft. She has an incredibly strong voice. She puts on great characters. But more important than all of those things, she's really a good person. She's kind, she's caring, and she's helpful to all the members of the Colonial Players. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about Katie. Katie's won several awards, been nominated for several awards. She won an Independence Award for High School Musical Theater as Supporting Actress a few years ago. She was also nominated in a variety of things, but this year she's accomplished something really fantastic. Each year in New York, they hold something called the National High School Theater Awards, which is shortened to the Jimmy Awards based on, on the founder. The 72 best musical theater students from across the country get to go to New York to participate in this event. They sing together, they train with Broadway actors, they perform for Broadway producers and casting agents. It's a very exciting event this year. It's virtual, but nonetheless, all those opportunities will still be there. Many of the graduates of this program have ended up on Broadway, including the recent star of Dear Evan Hansen and the recent star of Hades Town. So the Philadelphia Independence Awards was able to nominate two students to go this year. And it's our first year participating in this. And so Katie is the first female nominee from the Philadelphia area ever to participate in the Jimmy Awards, which is really very exciting. She will be participating virtually from June 20th till about January, July 1st. And then they will put that whole show together, which will air live, I believe, on YouTube on July 15th, where kids are eligible for scholarships and all kinds of different exciting things. As I said before, possible, you know, in the future Broadway castings and those kinds of things. So we're really proud of Katie. We're really thrilled that she has this opportunity. And we're looking forward to all of her future endeavors and all the things that, that she'll get to do as she moves on from her Plymouth White Marsh. So ladies and gentlemen, Katie Smith.
Sorry, I couldn't find the thing. I, I just really want to thank Mr. Engel and the school board for letting theater continue, even though we're in a time that's kind of hard to do live theater. So I really want to thank Dr. Christian and everyone on the board for helping us continue our craft and helping us achieve our dreams. Thank you.
Absolutely. Congratulations, Katie. I was reading up, I was reading about the Jimmy Awards. What a, you are in rare air with that accomplishment. So, you know, just another great example of the, the, the depth and breadth of the talent in this, in the class of 2021. That concludes our, our student recognitions this evening for the board. Students and teachers, I'm sure you would love to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're happy to, you're welcome to. But I know you have final exams coming up as we prepare for graduation and I'm sure lessons to plan. So if you'd like to stay, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we certainly understand if you need to go. But thank you for joining us this evening. It was very special.
Thank you, Dr. Christian.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I would like to have a motion to approve board minutes as presented in items 4B through 4E. That includes board business meeting, the facilities meeting, the curriculum meeting, and the community relations and student life meeting. If someone could please make a motion. Thank you. A second. Beth, any questions or comments on any of the minutes? All in favor? Great. Thank you. And I would like to have a motion to approve the financial reports as presented in items 5B through 5M for April. They are all listed on the agenda. And may I please have a motion? Chris, thank you. Second. Adam, any questions or comments on any of the financial reports? All in favor? Great. Thank you. And a motion to approve the April 2021 treasures report. Eunice, and a second. Adam again. Thank you. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Great. Superintendent's update?
Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Mr. Bogley, if you could put up the presentation? So before we move to the next slide, for the benefit of our community members and the benefit of the board, I'd like to preface my comments by saying there's not an action item tonight that, or a motion that the board is voting on. We are obviously in the process of doing an interest survey, survey for families in preparation for the 2122 school year, specifically regarding the types of instructional models that we'll be offering to our families as, as we continue to experience the ever-changing COVID guidelines. But we, I wanted to provide the board and the community with an update for our planning for the fall. There'll be additional updates on June 8th, which is a Tuesday. There'll be, it was advertised as June 7th, but our curriculum meeting will be June 8th. And then at the June 17th, board business meeting. Mr. Bogley, you can move forward. So our overarching goal, as we enter next school year, is to start that school year as we're finishing this school year with a return for five days of in-person instruction for all of our grades. That is what we're planning to do and, and that is our intention to open the fall. Our other goal underlying that is to not only offer five days in person, but to make it as close to pre-pandemic conditions as possible. Engaging students, making sure that we have full classrooms, students participating in labs, students participating in a variety of academic activities from a K to 12 perspective. That's our vision and that's our plan. Obviously, there still could be some restrictions that are imposed upon us. You know, the, the virus and the pandemic, although it seems like it's been with us for much longer, it's still in relative terms in its infancy and been around for 15 or 16 months. So there could be, and we certainly hope there's not, there could be challenges that we face this coming fall or winter that will require us, require us to institute certain mitigating efforts. But the reality is, we are seeing a great decrease in cases, particularly in Montgomery County. And there has been an increase in vaccinations. We were able to host the, several vaccinations for our high school students. Their second shots coming up in, in, in the next week. And then we were able to host one for 12 to 15-year-olds just the other day, where we had 500 participants from our, from our schools, which is excellent. And we would like to see that continue. So it decreases the risk. But we certainly understand the value of in-person education. And we know that that's what our students want. We know it's what our employees want and we know it's what our families want. You know, most recently, the positivity rate has reached the low range according to the Department of Health guidelines, under 5%, which is excellent. And the incident rate, while still moderate, is, is low, especially when compared to the winter months of December through February, where we were seeing 200 to 300 cases per day and, and numbers in the high substantial range per 100,000 cases. Specifically to vaccines, I had a meeting today with county commissioners, Dr. Arkush attended, and county superintendents. And right now, one statistic they shared was that 66% of Montgomery County residents ages 12 and older are at least partially vaccinated. It's about 33% that receive both doses and another 30 to 33% that have received at least one dose. So they're not fully vaccinated, but 66% are at least partially vaccinated. Also, as it relates to our, our senior citizen population and people at the age 65 and over, 98% of individuals 65 and older are at least partially vaccinated in the county. So we continue to see opportunities for vaccinations and we hope folk, we hope people take advantage of those opportunities. And we've offered the use of our buildings as, as needed for the county. Go ahead, Drew. So we surveyed families and we tried to keep it, the survey as simple as possible and asked direct questions about folks' intentions for the fall. And at the elementary level, what we're seeing is be, what we're seeing now is being confirmed by our survey. And what I mean is we have the majority of our students in school over the past month and a half and through the end of the year, and that's going to continue. We had a great response rate to the survey, over 90%. And you can see that 95% of our families desire in-person learning. We do have some that have a need and have a request to learn, participate fully virtual. And then another percentage, triple that of those that want virtual, that are somewhat undecided and still considering different options. At the secondary level, response rate was not quite as strong. The survey is open till tonight. We, you know, we had to pick a point to put this presentation together and go with the data that we have. But 61% isn't bad and, and we're still seeing the same trend. And I'm happy to see that because although we've been open for five days per week at our high school, we haven't seen that in the attendance. And we know we're offering a dual platform and we know that it's sometimes feasible for students to stay home. But we're seeing the same trend that we see in the elementary, where the fall is leading to a full return to school. And so that is in alignment with our vision. Go ahead, Drew. So obviously, as we talk about a return to school, most are interested in returning full-time. We know that in-person instruction is most effective for students. It's a way to engage students and operating on a dual platform has had many challenges. And I say that knowing that our staff has done a wonderful job and that our families have been patient and done a wonderful job engaging using that dual platform. But really, we know that in-person education is more effective. It allows for that student engagement, which allows for student achievement and growth. And really, I think, you know, there are also just the rewards of being around your peers and the opportunities for being in school that helps students achieve and grow. We have had families, and I've had some families reach out to me personally because they have a, they have a need to continue with a virtual option. Although the numbers are not very high based upon our results, that doesn't change the fact that there are some families that may have circumstances that they decided to share, that that's a need. Especially as we are awaiting the approval of vaccinations, particularly for those ages five to 11. Depending upon which news outlet that you read, you may hear that it's going to be offered in the fall. I've read a few different articles as recently as this morning, some predicting that that vaccination could be approved in the fall, but not administered until early 2022. And I'm sure we will continue to see updates as, as they progress. But we know what's currently approved and we need to be able to be prepared as we move forward, should it be offered to younger children as well. Lastly, we can't, we can't change the fact that the virus isn't going away. We're glad that it's decreasing, but it's not eliminated. And we need to be prepared for the reality of what the guidance is related to. And the guidance related three months from now, the guidance related to quarantining may be different than it currently is. But right now, we have had to quarantine students because of being close contacts. And we have had students then participate virtually as a result of having to stay home. Even if they were asymptomatic, but they were close contact, they were required to quarantine for a certain number of days. So we need to acknowledge, we have the technology, our teachers have done a great job with it. But really, we don't want that to be our, our guiding force. We want to have that as a backup and as an additional resource to keep kids engaged, should we need to quarantine. We're investigating different opportunities. There's opportunities to test out of quarantine, opportunities for something called tests to stay. And those things are still being developed, Office of Public Health, CHOP, CDC. So I do think tests, assurance testing will become more prevalent. And there'll be, there'll be things that we investigate that certainly would require parent or guardian consent before we were to administer that in school. But we need to have that as a, as a backup. Because unfortunately, as we, hopefully in, in August and September, we see minimal cases. We have a great return to school, but we need to be cognizant that in the winter, we could see a spike in cases. That's just the reality. There could be variants. We hope there's not. We plan, but we need to plan and just in case there are. So considerations for the fall, you know, one of the things we were thinking of doing as we got the survey responses back was creating a virtual class per grade level. And what would that look like? It could, for example, in first grade, if we had students from our four different K to three buildings whose families were looking for a virtual option, we could cluster those students in one class. And we can really do that K to five, should we have the numbers. We are really, we have so few families, we have such a high response rate at the K to five level that right now, I think it was 21 students thus far, K to five, that said the plan they would hope to be all virtual. We, I do realize there are some that are undecided and looking to, looking to the district to see what the different plans are before they make a final determination. But really, those numbers are so, are so small. And here's where it gets challenging. From a scheduling standpoint, we need to be able to allocate our resources appropriately. We have a certain number of human resources. We, we, we certainly want to make sure that we make sure class sizes are equitable throughout the district, whether you're participating virtually or the majority are participating in person. But we need to make sure that we have those. So the reality is, with fewer families seeking virtual options, we're looking at a couple of different plans and more will be described on June 8th. But we're looking at a couple of different ideas related to a combination of asynchronous and synchronous work for our 100% virtual learners. We know the value of teacher contact, but we're really trying to move away from the dual platform so that we can acknowledge those students that are in our classes and that we have a specific plan to address those students who are all virtual. There's been some, some trepidation and, and, and families shared with me some emails that a year-long commitment at this point in May, leading to 2122, is too long. Especially if I'm waiting as a parent, if I have a five to 11-year-old and I'm anticipating a vaccine. So we're going back to the, we're going back to the drawing board and we're looking at the trimester dates to see what we can come up with. I don't have a specific for you this evening, but Mrs. Gregitis, myself, the principals and I have met multiple times and we're putting together ideas that we'll share at our curriculum meeting. So, but we did hear, we did hear from some of those families and we wanted you to know that we're doing our best to put that in process. The realities are though, it's, it's a challenge at, at each of our levels, K to five, six to eight, and nine to 12. But we will be, will be as prepared as we possibly can be. Drew? Drew? Six to 12 is a little bit of a different animal. When you get into the middle school, our students are still in teams. So they are in cohorts like they are in the elementary level. But when they go to their special area classes, they are grouped with other students. So it's possible, should we have the numbers and they warrant it, to create within a course, for example, 7th grade English on one particular team. It's possible that a section within those courses might be all virtual students that we can cluster together. Then the challenge would be then, as we go to our special area classes, where we may need to, we have to get a little more creative. And that's where the asynchronous and synchronous work comes in. You know, the core area classes, we feel pretty good about. But once again, we're seeing the majority of families that are saying they're coming back. So Mr. Fowler and his team are working on a couple of different options that we'll be presenting to families. And in addition to presenting them at the curriculum meeting, our building principals will be sending out messages and information to our families so they can understand what the process is going to be. Once again, we need to maintain equitable class sizes in all of our classes. If we create a class of seven somewhere, it creates a class of 28 somewhere else. And that's a very simplified way to explain scheduling in the middle school and high school. But it's a reality that takes place. So we need to be mindful of that. When you look at a high school schedule, that's where you are looking at a very involved schedule. You're looking at hundreds of courses. And yes, there are some courses that are offered to the majority of students. Every student's required to take English 9. They're required to take a certain number of social studies credits. But when you look at the number of electives, the number of AP courses, the number of special education courses, the number of classes in the arts, music, engineering, international baccalaureate, you're talking about hundreds of courses. So although we only have a smattering of students who've indicated they'd like to be all virtual, that makes scheduling those very challenging. So Dr. Picani and his team are looking where they can cluster students and offer those opportunities for a virtual section. But that will be our biggest challenge over the next several weeks as they continue to build the master schedule at the high school. Drew? So the current survey actually closes tonight. And what I'll do is, I'll ask Mrs. Lester, our community relations coordinator, to keep it open through tomorrow. Because I do realize we may have folks, and we'll get one more email blast out, that if they haven't responded. We have great data for our elementary division, but I would like to see a little more of the secondary responses. And then at our June 8th curriculum meeting, we'll present our instructional recommendations for K to five, six to eight, and nine to 12. But as I said, for our virtual learners, we're looking at a combination of synchronous and asynchronous work. And we understand the value of having that teacher connection. But we also are trying to move away from the dual platform that we use this year and get back to a regular schedule, as regular as we can, pre-pandemic. And that, to meet the needs of the majority of our students. And then in June, we will be asking parents, after that presentation on June 8th, we'll be asking parents to make a commitment to their decisions. And we will be available to answer questions related to specific schedules and family needs. And I suspect we will post that survey June 9th, the day of graduation, and keep it open for a week and a half or so so that we can get a commitment, because we do need to schedule. Although it's May and early June that we're talking about doing this, the reality is, we know that the end of August will be here sooner than we think, in a bat of an eye. So we need to make sure we have all that accomplished so that we can allocate the proper human and material resources to meet our students' needs. Like I said, tonight, it's not a voting item. If there's comments, certainly comments from the community, I'll accept them. They would be more appropriate at the end of the meeting since it's not a voting item. But I know the board always wants to hear from our public. And at this time, before we turn it over to Mrs. Moore, I'll, Mrs. Gregitis and I are available to answer. And Mrs. Burke, any questions at the board?
I guess my only question is, it's a question that's been happening for 14 months, is what guidance are we going to look at as we make these decisions? And how do we know? The answer, I know the answer is, we don't know. How is it going to change as the summer progresses? I think we have to try to be a little bit proactive in trying to assume where it will go, even though we can't, obviously. But I just want us to keep in mind that there are always risks. And there have always been students who need to be homesick. And we never had virtual options before for those who may have been sick and had to miss a few days. And again, I'm not making any state blanket statements. I'm just saying we have survived in the past pre-pandemic that kids would miss a couple of days of school and they didn't have a virtual option because they got the flu, because they had to, whatever the reason may be. So I just want to make sure that we're, and I know you are, looking at all of the recommendations across the board. We have the stinking World Health Organization, the CDC, the state, the county, Department of Health, Department of Education, there's so many. So trying to juggle those with finding a way to provide the best education for the majority of our students, and we're never going to be able to please everybody. So I think that's the part that's the hardest, is juggling all of those things. And I thank you, as always, for all of your due diligence and just hope that we can try to find a way to make things as pre-pandemic normal as possible, as I know you've already stated. So thank you for your hard work.
Certainly. And I think the biggest difference, and I understand everything you're saying, Mrs. Doudouzi. I guess the biggest difference is that right now, the current guidance and requirements for contact tracing and quarantining require students to be out anywhere from seven to 10 days. And that's a little bit more than pre-pandemic, when somebody would just be out for one or two days. You know, especially on the block schedule at the high school, you're talking about semester courses. So that's a significant chunk of time.
Yes, I thought that the testing to in or the testing out would have been, that's what I was assuming. So a very good point. If that doesn't happen, correct, that's way too long, but I was hoping that that would be a reality.
I hope so too. And I hope that, you know, we continue, we'll continue to meet with OPH throughout the summer. I ask for those meetings to continue.
You're looking at a possibility of maybe only committing for a third or a report period rather than the whole year as one of the options?
Well, our elementary's, our K to eight program operates on trimesters, so there's some natural breaks there, Mrs. Northcutt. So, and the parents that reached out to me, I understood their point, anticipating when the vaccine is coming and wanting a little flexibility and latitude there. The reality is, and I'll be honest for those folks, I'm sure some of them are watching or will be watching a recording of this, that could require a change in teacher from what we do at the beginning of the year to when they move in. Not definitively, but it could. And that's just the reality of trying to schedule 5,200 students into all of their classes.
Dr. Christian, given the small numbers of people who responded that they were interested in virtual in the fall, if we offered that option, is there a possibility that we would have to combine grade levels?
We looked at that, glanced at it, but that's not something that's the topic of our priority list.
Okay. I mean, I saw 21 people, so I just didn't know. That's going to be.
And that could grow. Right now, it's just a few students per grade level. I, you know, we, and working with my colleagues and working with Mrs. Gregitis and Mrs. Burke and the teams involved and the principals. There are some districts around us where they're seeing up to, you know, one section per grade level, you know, 18 to 25 kids, somewhere around there. But there are a few that are very similar to us where the numbers are just very low, particularly at the elementary level. So that's a bit of a challenge, but we'll come up with a plan.
To be determined. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
And I know you had said earlier about, you know, worrying about human and financial resources. You know, to have a teacher teach a virtual class of five students might not be the best use of our human and capital resources. So that's why I think, you know, either those numbers hopefully can get to a point where it makes sense financially and humanly. But those numbers make it really hard. So that was an interesting question, Sue, about combining classes.
Yeah, I appreciate you looking at the virtual option and, you know, considering it. I think it's important, you know, for that we at least be planning for it and looking at a way to implement it that makes sense, recognizing that low numbers may impact, you know, how we would do it. But I do think, you know, there may be some families that have health issues or other issues that, you know, that sort of make it, you know, a strong, you know, requirement almost that they be virtual. You know, I also think that, you know, we have these tools, we have this technology, and I recognize that it's not ideal. But I also think that, you know, we should think hard about how we can incorporate virtual, you know, into, you know, into the district going forward, just, you know, in case you have, you know, kids that get sick and need to be home for a lengthy period of time or for other, you know, for other reasons. You know, it's not ideal, but it can work. And so I, you know, I do think it's a good thing to be, you know, looking at. And I think my final point is, I think, you know, we really should think hard about the length of a commitment, especially if we don't have a large number of students who would be choosing virtual. You know, I think the year was too long and, you know, I'm glad you've recognized that.
Yeah, again, I appreciate you looking at everything. You know, the reality is, we have an obligation to educate every student in the district. You know, it may not be in the way that every family chooses, but the district is obligated to provide education for every student. And so I'm glad, we're looking at all the options. And I hope that we'll build on the tools that we identified. And I wonder if perhaps we could add to the survey, if we can ask whether it's just a matter of waiting until there are vaccinations for your children, that would probably give the district some additional data for use and planning purposes. Because if it's literally, you know, gosh, if they release vaccines and, you know, September 10th, by mid-October, we're ready to be back, well, that's really good planning. And if that's the majority of families, that lets you plan much more specifically.
I just have a question in your conversations that you have with the IU and other local school districts. Has the IU, like, considered any kind of option that the district could pull into for the students that might want to choose a virtual option for whatever reason?
The IU is, they have some programming that they can assist with providing as sort of like, they're sort of the vehicle that we can tap into to a variety of vendors for additional resources. They don't presently have a plan. If three districts in the area said, hey, I only have seven students in this particular grade, they don't have a, like a virtual school that we could put them in, shared with another district. But that idea has been shared with the IU as a possibility to investigate. But they do have some resources that we can tap into and we get better pricing on those resources because we're part of the IU. Mrs. Moore, public comment?
Yep. Do we have any public comments, Drew? People with their hands raised or any emails that we've received?
We do have a hand raised.
Okay.
Please state your full name, place of residence before commenting.
Sure. Hi, I'm Vicki Hanson-Landis. I'm so happy to be here. Thank you for having us. I will be familiar probably to Dr. Christian. I'm a public health expert and a nurse. And I just wanted to mention that when we got the survey about what did we want to do with our kids next year, and it was saying full year or, you know, full year virtual or come right back to school five days a week. You know, those of us who are a little more risk averse and everything else, even, I didn't want to click, put my kid in full year virtual. Of course, I know that she belongs in school. And so we were all just kind of like, oh, why doesn't this have a, you know, send them back once they can get a vaccine link? And I hear Dr. Christian send you saying that that is going to be a possibility. But I'd kind of be interested in the survey data, you know, because you're like, oh, well, only 21 families wanted virtual. But it felt really scary to click, I want virtual, when it felt like you were saying you wanted it for the whole year. So I think that survey data is a little misrepresentative because folks felt like they didn't want to say, yes, I'd like virtual for a whole year. That's really all I wanted to say.
I can appreciate that. I appreciate the feedback. And that's why we put the undecided piece in there, but I do understand your point and appreciate you sharing that.
Anyone else, Drew?
That's it at this time.
Okay, then moving on with our agenda. Chris, could you please do grant approval for food services?
You're muted, Mrs. Epstein.
There we go. Sorry about that. Motion to approve a grant from the School Nutrition Foundation to our Food Services Department in the amount of $65,000. The Food Service Department has been awarded the Equipment Collection Grant from the School Nutrition Foundation. Over 140 school nutrition professionals nationwide applied for the grant, all vying for $65,000 worth of new kitchen equipment. And we are extremely grateful for this opportunity to replace aging equipment to better serve our students.
Is there a second to the motion? Rosemary, thank you. Any comments or questions? I'd just like to thank Lori McCoy for getting us this grant, for applying for it. And of course, she continues to do an incredible job for us. All in favor? Great. Chris, you want to continue?
Sure. Sorry. Motion to approve a donation from the Giant Feed Bag, our Feeding School Kids Program in the amount of $26,456.66. These funds are a result of the tremendous success of the Giants Roundup Program. The funds will be used to eliminate accumulated meal debt of needy students and offset costs of expanding meal service for children over the summer.
Is there a second to the motion? Kathy, thanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great, thank you. Dr. Christian, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Action is requested for items 10A and B. Motion to approve the personnel report and extracurricular contracts as outlined in 10B. Board action is requested for the recommended personnel changes, appointments for promotion. Employment or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements. And before the board has a motion and a second and votes, on tonight's agenda, we have two important administrative positions that are being recommended to be filled. We have the principal of Plymouth Elementary and principalship at White Marsh Elementary. As many of you know, Mrs. Dryson is retiring after 25 years as principal at White Marsh. Mrs. Gregitis moved over into the director of curriculum role earlier this year. So we have had an interim principal at Plymouth, and we've been actively looking for principals for both schools. So we endeavored into a process over a month ago when we included parents and teachers in the first round of our interview process to meet a variety of candidates who applied for those jobs. We then had additional interviews by our administrative team, obviously thorough reference checks, a writing sample we collected. And it's easy to say we're looking for the best candidate. But what I like to say is, we're looking for the best match for each school. And I'm pleased to announce tonight that we are confident we have two great matches. matches, uh, for our, our, our wonderful K to three buildings. At Plymouth Elementary, we are recommending Kylene Phillips, who's currently sitting as the interim principal at Plymouth to become, to drop the interim and become the full-time principal. Uh, and at White Marsh Elementary, we are recommending Mr. Joshua Perlman, uh, to be named the principal at White Marsh and Donna Dryson's successor. Uh, I met with the Plymouth faculty earlier today, as well as the White Marsh faculty to share this good news and to introduce the candidates, uh, with Kylene. It was, uh, they were already pretty familiar with her. Um, but the faculty got to meet Josh over at White Marsh, uh, and he got to, uh, we're going to be, uh, beginning our transition plan for Josh. He still has some commitments in his current district before he can come over, but we hope to see him, uh, on or about July 1. Uh, and we will be putting out a communication to our families, both at Plymouth and White Marsh Elementary Schools, pending board approval this evening, introducing them as the new principals of the school. So I want to thank our teachers and parents for their participation and thank our administrative team, uh, for selecting, uh, two great matches for these positions.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the Superintendent's Report? Kathy, is there a second? Beth, any questions or comments on tonight's Superintendent's Report? Okay. All in favor of approving the report? Great. Thank you. And, and we welcome both Kylene to a full-time position and Josh at White Marsh. Congratulations. And we, um, we hope to see you in real time, real face-to-face time, uh, shortly. Thank you. Election of Board Treasurer. Section 404 of the Board School Code directs the school just Colonial School Board of Directors shall annually, annually during the month of May, elect a treasurer to serve one year, beginning on the first of July. Following such election, motion to appoint David Zablowski for the position of treasurer. Is there a second? Adam, thanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, tag Mr. Zablowski, you're it. Appointment of Student Board Representatives, Kathy.
We're struggling to find that stinking unmute button. Okay. Um, this is, um, in a court, in accordance with Board Policy 004, two students have been nominated for the positions of student representatives to the board. Interviews have been conducted and related information has been reviewed. This is a motion to accept the administration's recommendation for student representatives to the board. The two representatives are, and I have, that's why my, um, I couldn't find the mute button. I was referring to their, their resumes, um, which are ridiculous. Um, we have Ethan Verlin, as well as Emma Manley, who are two current juniors at PW and are remarkably, um, experienced in the world of, uh, working hard, um, volunteering, being involved and being all-around wonderful students. So, um, this is a motion to approve their, um, joining of the board as our student representatives.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second? Chris, thank you. Any comments or questions? Are both of you, after sitting through an hour and a half, you're still willing to do this? We're not done yet. So, all right, all in favor? Great. Welcome. And, um, we look forward to seeing you at our meetings from now on. Thanks.
Welcome, Ethan and Emma. Uh, I shared your res, we shared your resumes with the board. Distinguished Honor Roll, National Island Society, part of the International Baccalaureate Program, DECA, FBLA, Spanish Club. The list goes on and on. Quite frankly, I feel rather inadequate after I read your resumes, uh, particularly as it relates to your volunteer work in addition to your excellent academics. So we're looking forward to, to your leadership and, and joining the board.
And next year, we hope to see you in person at every meeting, um, that we will be in person and so will you. So thanks again. Moving on to board policies, Chris, if you could take that.
Sure. Motion to approve the policies outlined below on a first read basis. Policy 121 Field Trips, Policy 204 Attendance, and Policy 306 Employment of Summer School Staff.
Is there a second to Chris's motion? Beth, thank you. Any questions or comments on any of these three policies?
Just, oh, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the adding of the provision in the field trip policy for, um, families of students who may have a financial hardship, ensuring that, that, uh, they can go on the, on, on field trips.
Right. And that's always been our practice, but it's good to get it in policy. So thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Thank you. Chris?
Sure. Um, motion to approve the policies outlined below on a second read basis. Policy 138 Language Instruction Educational Program for English Learners. Policy 140 Charter Schools. 140.1 Extracurricular Participation for Charter and Cyber School Students. Policy 209 Health Examinations and Screenings, and Policy 210 Medications.
Is there a second to Chris's motion? Rosemary, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now deletions, Chris?
Sure. Motion to delete board policies outlined below. Policy 304 Line of Responsibility. That policy language is included in active policy 005, um, and it was adopted, that policy was adopted in July of 2018. Policy 304.2 Appointment. PSBA notes the language is not considered policy and would better be suited as part of an internal process or handbook. Policy 305 Assistance to Principals. PSBA notes that the language is not considered policy and we bet, be better suited as part of an internal process or handbook. And Policy 306 Outside Consultants for the exact same reason. Uh, it should be better suited as part of an internal process or handbook.
All right. Is there a second for those deletions? Rosemary, any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Thank you, Chris. Beth Petrino, Program of Studies.
This is a motion to approve the Plymouth-White Marsh High School Program of Studies for the 2021-2022 school year. Course changes, additions, and deletions were reviewed by the Curriculum Committee of the Board on November 9th, 2020.
Is there a second? Kathy, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Final Budget Adoption, Eunice, and then you're just going to take over for a while.
Okay. Um, so item G, this is a motion to approve and adopt the 2021-22 Final Budget totaling $140,962,768, which includes a real estate tax rate of 23.995, an increase of 2.7%. Um, and the final budget totals 140, 140,816,988, which is an increase of $3,493,248, or 2.54% over the 2020-21 spending plan. The final budget includes a real estate tax of 23.995 mils, an increase of 2.7%. The new real estate tack, tax equates to an additional $63.10 per year for each $100,000 of taxable assessed value, or an increase of $96.42 on the district's median assessed value of a homestead property of $152,850. The final budget includes the use of $3,10523 of fund balance, and the final budget is in the state-required format, and it's attached and available for review on the district website.
Is there a second to that motion? Chris, thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the final budget? Adoption.
I just want to say thank you for getting it down to 2.7. I know at our Finance Committee Meeting, we had, it was at 3, I, right? I'm not wrong, right? Yeah. Cause I remember thinking, oh, 2.9 would feel much better. Um, but down to 2.7, I think is a wonderful, um, we, we, we need to thank and commend our staff for the wonderful work of finding a way to, I think Dr. Christian says, trim the fat, although we don't have much fat. I don't know how you did that. Um, but thank you for finding a way to, to make it so that we didn't have to raise the taxes to the 3% level that we had originally had. So thank you to Mike and to, I'm sorry, to Dr. Christian and Mr. Zablowski for their, and staff for their hard work.
Thanks, Kathy. Any other comments or questions?
If I could say a few things, uh, I think this is a very appropriate that the final budget is the next agenda item after the, the course of studies is, has been approved because this budget does support, uh, a, a very good education here at the, at the Colonial School District. Uh, this budget is based on, as Dr. Christian laid the foundation, a pre-pandemic plan to get back to normal for next year. Uh, we do expect that, uh, our enrollment will continue to increase after a slight pause over the last couple of years of a pandemic. Uh, we do have four new teachers, uh, included in this budget. We are, uh, assuming that our transportation is going to get back to normal for next year. Uh, but we have some very good news because, uh, uh, second half of this fiscal year will be opening up a new middle school. Uh, one of the cost drivers in, in this budget is the fact that we have to pay for that school. Uh, so the debt services is, is up, uh, so that we can provide a very good education for our, our sixth to eighth graders. Uh, from a revenue standpoint, uh, the pandemic has taken quite a hit on our assessed values, especially of our commercial properties. Uh, later in this agenda, you'll see there's some, uh, stipulations of agreement for assessment appeals. One of those is the Plymouth Meeting Mall, which we put a pretty big hit on. Uh, so I believe that with everything that's happened over the last two years with the pandemic and trying to get back to normal, this is an excellent budget and we highly recommend, uh, and thank you for the accolades of, for bringing it down to 2.7%.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah. I mean, I just want to say I'm glad that we were able to get it down to 2.7%. I think it, um, you know, it, it reflects the, um, the strength of the district, the strength of, uh, our administration and, um, in, uh, being able to control the costs that we can control. And, uh, you know, I, I think it puts us in a good position, um, going forward, um, uh, with our, you know, with our community. Um, and, you know, I, I just, you know, would like to say that given the, the, the strength of the district and given that we're able to, to, you know, reduce the, the tax increase because of that, you know, I also just hope that, um, you know, that we can take that into account and, and, in other places as well. Thank you.
Mr. Zablowski, I know that we had to, um, or that you had to identify these reductions. Can you talk about the things that we won't be spending money on, um, in order to, to make this cut? Just so it's clear, um, you know, the, the choices that the district is making?
Sure. What, what contributed to the reduction from May 3rd to tonight is, uh, several, uh, revenue items. We got, uh, assessed value, a report from Montgomery County, uh, which still shows that, uh, from a residential standpoint, we are seeing some increases, uh, from, uh, from the, the brisk, uh, housing market that we see out there. Uh, we also got some very good news that, uh, in the Conshohocken Borough, uh, two, two major commercial properties, the Hamilton Lane Building and also the, uh, Bergen or Marisource Bergen Building, uh, will be finished during this, uh, this fiscal year. Uh, so that helped us in the revenue side. Uh, on the expenditure side, we were able to trim, uh, a couple of, uh, planned acquisitions, uh, to, uh, in the facilities area, uh, we were able to, uh, more efficiently handle our, uh, technology and software, uh, bringing in, uh, some, some new software that's going to eliminate several other duplicate, uh, packages. Uh, so we believe that with the increase of revenue and the decrease of expenditures helped us put these numbers together.
We also took a look at the, the leases for our computers. So, you know, one thing we were planning to do pre-pandemic was to become a one-to-one district. Well, when the pandemic hit, we became a one-to-one district. Uh, but the reality is, is that it was a lot of different devices and, and a lot of different, uh, types of devices. So spent a lot of time, uh, we used Esther's money, the federal money to purchase some, uh, additional devices. And as we're moving to Chromebooks, which is really what the majority of our staff wanted, I know the younger kids use a lot of iPads. We took a look at the existing leases that we had. We're stretching them out a little bit. So we'll still have a smooth, uh, you know, we need to purchase technology or lease technology annually. It needs to be updated, it needs to be renewed. But based on what we had with the federal money, we're able to smooth that out over the next four to five years to avoid any big bumps. Uh, and that could be, I mean, literally, when you're talking about technology, you can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not more, millions on devices and things like that. So, uh, just really drilled down to some of those efficiencies. But we will make sure that we have everything that students need for a quality instructional program.
And I think just for anyone listening, obviously, we would all love to have a zero increase in everyone's taxes, but that's not feasible given, uh, the expansion of the district in terms of students and how much of our budget is, what's the term, Mr. Zablowski?
Dedicated?
Dedicated to, to things that increase every year and, and we really can't control. So, uh, thank you for doing a great job in bringing this down from the maximum of 3.0 to 2.7. Anybody else have any questions or anything to say? All right. All in favor of the approval of the budget at 2.7? Please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. Eunice?
So the next is, um, a motion to approve the 2021-2022 taxation rates, fees, and billing rates as presented. Um, the real estate tax rate of 23.995, Act 511 Earn Income Tax Rate of 1%, 50% shared with the resident municipality. Real estate tan, transfer tax rate of 1%, 50% shared with the resident municipality. Amusement ten, tax rate of 10%, 50% shared with Plymouth and White Marsh Townships. Real Estate Tax Certification Fee of $25 per property, and the billing date for 2021-22 Real Estate Tax Bills of July 1st, 2021.
Is there a second to that motion? Kathy, thanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Okay.
This is a motion to accept $3,350,728.68 in property tax relief as provided by Special Section Act 1 of 2006, and to further establish the 2021 exclusion of $13,570 from each eligible, eligible homestead and farmstead assessment within the Colonial School District to produce a maximum tax reduction of $325.61.
Is there a second? Adam, thanks. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. And just, I don't know if, if it makes sense for Mr. Zablowski to just provide a little explanation of what this is and
Sure.
why we're able to do this.
Back in 2006, uh, uh, part of the, uh, plan of bringing, uh, casino gambling, uh, and slot machines into Pennsylvania, uh, there was a, uh, part of legislation was to save, uh, or use some of that money to reduce property taxes for, uh, homeowners in, uh, in, in Pennsylvania. Uh, since 2006, we have, uh, every year, uh, established, uh, an amount of money to, uh, reflect the reduction, uh, using this, these gambling funds. Uh, we were sort of shocked this year with the, uh, pandemic that the casinos, uh, still produced enough losses or gains for us, uh, that would provide for more money, uh, this year to be distributed than, than last year. Uh, last year's amount was $311.91. This year, $325.61. But we get this money directly from the state. It comes, uh, half of it comes in August, half of it comes in October. This is a revenue-neutral act that was passed by the legislator. So the, the full 3.325 amount, uh, a million dollars that we get has to be distributed equally, uh, to all the qualified, uh, homo, uh, homesteads and farmsteads. the qualified, uh, home, uh, homesteads and farmsteads in, in our, our school district. But with that said, uh, this coming December, if you're not in the homestead or farmstead program, you will be getting a mailer, uh, that you have to fill out and send back to the Montgomery County Assessment Office to qualify for this for next year. Uh, March 1st is the deadline. I know, uh, everybody gets it each year, they think it's part of their, uh, income taxes, but it is not. This is to reduce your property taxes, so I would ask that when you get your mailer, this coming December, that you fill it out, sending in, send it in so that you can get your share of the $325 for 2022.
Okay.
Public service announcement.
Thanks. All in favor? All right, great. Okay. Bank depositories, Eunice?
This is a motion to approve the attached list of banking and investment institutions for the 2021-22 fiscal year. The school, public school code directs that the Board of School Directors at any school district shall designate, designate one or more banks or trust companies as depositories for school funds, and therefore, school board approval is sought to approve the Pennsylvania School District Lickwood Asset Fund in, in conjunction with PNC Bank as the primary depository for school funds. And there's an attached listing of banks and investment depositories recommended for solicitation of interest rates for school investments during the 2021 school year, and investments are subject to confirmation of bank maintenance and legally required collateral.
Okay, may I have a second on that motion? Rosemary, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Great. Okay, keep going.
Okay. This is a motion to approve the Colonial School District Real Estate Tax Installment Payment Plan Resolution. That's an option for all taxpayers. For the 2021 tax bills that will be issued on July 1st, 2021, the installments and payment terms will revert to the pre-pandemic practice. This action will allow for three equal installments of 1/3 of the flat tax due on August 15th, September 30th, and Au- October 31st. The discount period allowing a 2% discount will be from July 1st to August 31st. The flat period will be from September 1st to October 31st, and the penalty period will be for taxes received after October 31st and will, will be subject to a 10% late penalty.
Is there a second to the motion? Rosemary, thank you. Any questions or comments?
You have one comment. The bills will be, the end of the flat period is October 31st, but because October 31st falls on a Sunday this year, uh, the law provides that we will extend that, uh, automatically to November 1st to, to have all bills, uh, paid by a postmark of, of, uh, November 1st. So, the 10% penalty in effect will only kick in for anything after November 6th.
Great, thank you, Dave. All in favor? All right, Eunice?
Okay, this is a motion to accept the Pennsylvania Auditor General's performance audit of the Colonial School District for the period July 1st, 2015 through June 30, 2019.
Is there a second to that motion? Chris? Any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Zablosky, just, can you just briefly explain what this is and what the findings were?
Sure. Uh, the State Auditor General, uh, periodically visits, uh, every school district across the state, uh, and they have, uh, they pour through our books, they, uh, this year, uh, they did it virtually, uh, they were with us for almost six months, and in those six months, they looked at, uh, a lot of information. Uh, we did have two findings this year. Uh, one had to do with the, uh, transportation of non-public, uh, students. The finding was that, uh, that they found that, uh, our public, non-public student rosters were un-auditable, uh, because we did not have, uh, good enough detail. So, uh, we, we, uh, felt that that was because we had a transition in the Transportation Department from the time the audit started until the audit finished. Uh, we have since addressed that finding, and that will not be a pro- not be a problem going forward. Uh, the second finding had to do with a very, uh, confusing issue of, of state-placed, uh, students within the, the school district. There were two students that were, uh, identified as wards of the state when they were actually placed here by the school district. Uh, we have a lot of students coming and going because of our, uh, the, the location of Gemma Services within the old Martin Luther Silver Springs, uh, uh, program, uh, that we have to educate those children. So, there are a lot of kids in and out of our school. Uh, the fact that we only had two, uh, in the four years that they, uh, that they audited, uh, was, was really not too bad, but we did get $24,590 in extra boards of state, uh, subsidy that we now have to return to the state. Uh, but, uh, to remedy that, uh, those students will be tracked back to their home schools, and we will be billing the school district of origin to get that money back. So, uh, really, it, the, the audit was, uh, acceptable from, from our standpoint. Uh, we look at these two things as, as kind of minor, but we have addressed them, and we will not, uh, have any findings in the future.
Okay, um, all in favor? Thank you. And your last one, Eunice?
Okay. Um, this is a motion to approve the stipulations to settle the assessment appeals of the properties outlined below.
Okay, and there are a whole lot of them, and if anyone's interested, you can see the numbers on board docs. There are second. Kathy, any comments or questions on any of these assessment appeals? All in favor? Great. Beth?
Okay, this is a motion to approve bids for art supplies, general school supplies, and paper products for the 2021-2022 school year. The attached bids have been analyzed on the basis of quality and costs with the lowest responsible bidder recommended. All bid procedures are in, in accordance with those established with the Pennsylvania School Code. Consideration of the following bids is requested: art supplies, general supplies, and paper products.
There are second to the motion. Rosemary, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Okay. Excuse me. Uh, motion to approve rental rates for the 2021-2022 be, uh, before and after-school programs in all elementary schools and 2021 summer camp program at $41.58 per day and $152, $152.30 per day respectively. Uh, the attached memo outlines the rental rate increase is proposed at 3% for both the before and after-school daycare programs at all the elementary school buildings and the summer camp program.
There are second? Jen, thank you. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Great, thank you. Jen?
A motion to approve the subcontract for the access program for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
Second? Uh, Eunice, thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Beth?
Uh, this is a motion to approve the educational services contracts for the 2021-2022 school year as presented. The contracts are with MK Therapy Services, Building Blocks Behavioral Services, Capstone Academy, the Vanguard School, and the Lincoln Center.
All right, uh, is there a second to that motion? Chris, thank you. If no one has any objections, we'll vote on them all as one item. All in favor? Great, thank you, everyone. And Jen, back to you.
Motion to approve the contract for MCIU to provide VHS program services for the 2021-2022 school year.
There are second? Eunice? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Beth?
This is a motion to approve the administration's request that authority be granted to the district superintendent for the time period of May 20th, 2021, through the next regularly scheduled board meeting in September, 2021, to appoint qualified personnel to vacant positions contingent upon the board ratifying the employment of such personnel at the next regularly scheduled public meeting.
There are second? Rosemary? And, um, any questions or comments? All in favor? Solicitors' report?
Uh, we have, uh, provided some guidance to the school district administration regarding little-known Pennsylvania legislation that requires, uh, the school district to provide leave for its employees for organ and tissue donation. We've also provided, uh, guidance to the district administration, uh, on the new teacher evaluation legislation pursuant to Act 13, which will have made, has made some substantive changes to the teacher evaluation process. And we are also working with many districts to revise your PSBA policy 006 to look at how our public meetings will be handled in, from my mouth to God's ears, a post-pandemic world. Are we going to adopt those issues, uh, moving forward? So, uh, that concludes my report. Masters, questions?
Thank you. Committee reports. Kathy?
Yes, um, we had a community relations, um, student life, safety, and wellness meeting on Monday, May 10th, and we had a food services update from Mrs. McCoy, um, which was, um, really uplifting, uh, for a couple of reasons. Number one, um, the ability for our students to receive free meals, uh, through a waiver issued by the federal government was extended through August 31st. Um, and then we were also told about, uh, two grants that Mrs. McCoy was able to, uh, attain. Uh, the one was a grant to purchase locally grown and raised produce, eggs, and chicken, which Mrs. McCoy said that the students were extremely excited about knowing where their food was coming from, and she actually said the amount of participation in buy, and, and getting the meals was higher because of that. Um, and another grant was, um, obtained, um, to purchase some new equipment for the school cafeteria. Uh, Mrs. McCoy also said that the staff, uh, served just under 300,000 meals and delivered over 33,000 pounds of food to the community during the pandemic. Obviously, this is a, a critical safety net that we were able to provide to the community. I want to thank Mrs. McCoy and all of the staff, as well as Dr. Christian, um, and all the administration and the board members for making sure that, um, all of these things were able to be done. I think that's wonderful. Um, and then we also talked about student vaccinations, um, working, uh, with Dr. Picani to make sure we had vaccinations offered at the high school, and at that time, this was before the vaccinations were approved for the 12 to 15, which now is something that we're offering, um, for those students as well. Um, and that's really, that's really it. I do not know when the next meeting is. I'm not exactly sure it's been scheduled yet because of the summer months, but keep an eye out for that, um, to attend the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
Um, the Curriculum Committee also met on Monday, May 10th. Mrs. Gregitis and her team once again reviewed our summer programming, um, and also talked about how the Colonial, um, website is going to be updated with new resources, um, for summer work for each grade level, including resources for our high school students. And there will also be, um, reading, summer reading lists that are going to be formatted a little bit differently this year. Um, they will be hyperlinked to Barnes &amp; Noble as part of a summer book fair, and, um, instead of just titles being listed, they're actually going to show book covers to hopefully gain more interest. And as a side note, I believe some of the teachers have rolled that out to students already, and, um, my fifth grader was very excited to see, um, you know, the live book covers. And also, hard copies of informational packets can be offered to students, um, and I believe they contact their building principals if they need to get hard copies of materials. Mr. James provided updates to the DEI Committee and reminded everyone that the DEI page on the district website has been updated with, um, mission, goals, vision, and, um, other resources for us. Um, and then Mrs. Gregitis, um, talked a little bit about the survey that Dr. Christian mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, and that that would be sent out to families. That will continue to be discussed at our next meeting, which has been scheduled for Tuesday, June 8th. Um, so, not on a Monday, it will be Tuesday, June 8th. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, facilities?
Sure, uh, very briefly, uh, the middle school is, uh, coming along, and then, um, this summer, we will be working, uh, paving projects at Ridge Park Elementary, White Marsh Elementary, and Conshohocken Elementary. Is that correct? Did I get that right? Yeah. And, um, anyway, they, hopefully, we'll have all the bids and be able to review them at our next meeting, which is on, uh, Monday, June 1st.
Great, thank you. Finance. Eunice, anything else you didn't cover tonight?
I was just going to say, we met on May 3rd, and therefore, you had to listen to me go through more than half a dozen motions this evening, so nothing further, and we'll meet again in June. I don't believe the date has been posted yet.
Great, thank you. And, um, HR, Beth is not here this evening, and I don't think she had a report. Eunice, the Central Monco Technical High School.
Sure. So, uh, we had a wonderful meeting, uh, at the tech school this month. We were able to see so many of our students honored for their accomplishments, um, at Central Monco. We saw lists and, and were able to see the students who were inducted into the National Technical Honor Society. We heard about the many winners of the Skills USA and HOSA competition winners, uh, a number of those, uh, students from Plymouth-White Marsh, um, as well as our other sending districts, and that was thrilling. Um, the tech school has some really wonderful summer programs coming up. Um, they're going to have some intensive skills programs for the current students in years two and three, um, so they'll be able to get 25 hours of hands-on experience, which we know is so important for our, our technical school students, and, you know, many of them didn't have the opportunity to get all the hours they would normally get any year, so we're excited about that. There will also be some career awareness programs in person for, um, upcoming seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, and, uh, students in our cosmetology program will have the opportunity to get a lot of their hands-on hours, uh, between the end of June and beginning of August. That's very exciting. The tech school graduation will be held this Saturday, the 22nd. Um, it will be a, an in-person event, uh, ticket limited to, to students and their families, divided into a couple of sessions so that we can accommodate everyone, uh, in person. We're very excited about that, and, uh, I know the tech school has a great program planned for those students. Um, and then, uh, you'll start to hear more this summer about the capital improvement plans, um, and to maintain that building and fix some of the, the things that need fixing at, at the building to make sure that we can keep it a great resource, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Intermediate, Jen?
My book is covering my thing, sorry. Um, a few years ago, the Harrisburg School District was struggling, and they got the IU to come in and take over and help them out. So, within two years, they went from a $2.9 million deficit, and now they have a $6.6 million surplus. And at the beginning of COVID, they had one device for every five students, and the IU contracted with Comcast, and they got 500, no, 55- And the IU contracted with Comcast, and they got 5,500 devices. So now it's one-to-one. And they got national recognition for their partnerships with the local police and the local food banks to help with their lunches.
Okay, thank you. Any legislative information other than what Jeff just reported in his solicitor report? Okay. Any community or municipal liaisons want to report?
Yes, news from Conshohocken. Right now, a musical garden is being installed and being added to the wonderful playground equipment in Marywood Park. On June 2nd, Wednesday, the borough is hosting a drive-through barbecue lunch pickup for Conshohocken seniors from 12 to 2 at the community center at the Fellowship House. And please spread the word. If there's any seniors who haven't yet registered, you call 610-828-3266. And we are thrilled that Saturday, June 5th, the annual Conshohocken Arts Festival and Car Show will be taking place in person on Fayette Street starting at 11 o'clock. So we invite everybody to come out to Conshohocken.
Okay. Colonial School District Educational Foundation, Rosemary, do you have a report?
Yes. I know people are still placing orders through Amazon, even as we're being able to get out in person to do some shopping. But if you are ordering anything from Amazon, please consider making the Colonial School District Education Foundation your designated charity through the Amazon Smile Program. And the recent total that has been granted to the foundation is $1,868.14 from those who have been, who have designated the foundation. And on Thursday, June 3rd, at 6:00 PM, there is going to be an in-person Carimore Winery Tour and Tasting. Tickets are $100 a person. Of course, there's an H21 requirement. And it should be, again, another wonderful in-person event with proceeds going to the foundation for the benefit of the children of the Colonial School District. And information is available on the foundation. Click on the foundation on our district's website to register. Thank you.
Thank you. Now's the time for any public comments. Do we have any, Drew?
See none at this time. Everyone just popped up.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My name's Kathleen Ward. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner, and my son is finishing up his sophomore year at Plymouth-White Marsh. So my first comment is that I am very grateful that we are in Colonial School District and at Plymouth-White Marsh High School and appreciate and want to extend my thanks to Dr. Bakani for making Plymouth-White Marsh High School, you know, recognized as one of the best high schools in Pennsylvania. So I'm really grateful and fortunate that my son is attending there. As a pediatric nurse practitioner that has been practicing for a long time, and I see patients in primary care, so I see kids generally for their checkups and, you know, routine sick care, I have been very much involved with, you know, treating my patients for not only their physical needs, but mental health needs and have seen a significant increase in anxiety and depression since the pandemic has happened. I've been trying to encourage people to get back to normal as much as possible. And what I'm hoping is, and again, appreciate everything that you've done to address the physical concerns and, you know, patient, people, kids returning to, you know, all-in-person learning. I definitely encourage that in the fall. I hope that happens. But also hoping that, as a district, not just for the high school, but for all kids, that hopefully, there can be some programs. I don't know what that might look like or something that might be integrated into daily curriculums for the mental health concerns for kids getting back to school, even though they're, you know, generally maybe very healthy, happy kids. But if they've been virtual for a long time, there might be a lot of anxiety returning to in-person learning. And unfortunately, today, it really struck home. I had a patient who was a very happy, healthy teenager, had COVID in November, and really has had a post-traumatic stress reaction to having COVID and being isolated. So, you know, although I hope that many kids will not be affected physically, and it shows that, you know, the data shows that most kids who get COVID recover very nicely or are not sick that long, but the isolation from it this year. And then that transition to returning to quote-unquote "normal" or getting back to, you know, really all-in-person can be quite challenging. So I'm hoping that there may be something that this district at large can look at to try to address all those concerns. Of course, there are going to be children who are going to be absolutely fine, you know, getting back, but there are going to be, I think, a large number of kids who may think they're fine and then go back in person in the fall and maybe having some reactions. So just a comment and hope that maybe you're looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will certainly have our CARES teams, which are part of our Student Assistance Program, active at all of our buildings this coming fall. And as part of the budget approval tonight, we also approved community, multiple community counselors to work in our buildings to provide assistance to students. And lastly, Mrs. Burke has been leading training for trauma-informed care for all of our counselors. And so we'll continue those professional development opportunities and offer those services to our families the remainder of this year and into next year. And we'll make sure that we communicate all of those resources that are available.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
There are none at this time.
Any other board comments or administration have anything else to say? I mean, I know this was a long meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. It was a great meeting to see the kids and the teachers. Mike, I really enjoyed that and hope we can continue it. And I think that's it. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.